Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, June the 11th, 2015 session of the Xenia City Council. For our meeting this evening, our invocation will be delivered by Mr. Charlie Huff, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Andrew Breckenridge, a Xenia High School student. If you would please rise with me for the invocation and pledge, please.
Good to see you all again, as we go to God in prayer. Thank you, Father, for this day. Thank you, Father, for the strength to be and do what I do. Thank you for being here amongst my friends, Lord. We make each other's days sometime, Lord, because it's a rough world and we need one another, someone that's true. I come tonight, Lord, to pray, like you said, pray without ceasing, pray for one another, take each other's burdens, think more of others than I do me, and truly you'll be with me every step of the way and I'll be blessed beyond measure. Today has been the best day of my life, and I can always say that. Thank you for the council members. Thank you for each one of them that I have built a relationship with, brothers and sisters in the Lord. Thank you, Lord, I thank them for what they do. I ask you to bless each and every one of them, Lord, because we are your children. Bless the ones that's here, bless the ones that's watching by TV, our firefighters and our policemen and the nurses and the hospitals, all the ones that help, a lot of sickness, Lord, a lot of elderly, and we thank you for being with us. You said you will never leave us or forsake us, and we can depend on you, so tonight we come together in one accord. You said it's my people, who I call by my name, who humble themselves and pray. You will hear us, Lord, and you will listen to us, and you said speak to one another often in Malachi 3:16, and when we do that, you listen to our conversation. Lord, thank you, and we come to you tonight in love and in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huff and Mr. Breckenridge. May I have roll call, please?
Vice President Long.
Here.
Councilman Cow.
Here.
Councilman Lauterback.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Mills.
Here.
Mayor Bayless.
Here.
President Engel.
Here.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of minutes from the May 28th, 2015 executive and regular session, please?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback, second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor. Discussion or question on the minutes, please. Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, and now a motion, please, for the May 28th, 2015 regular session.
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Smith, second, please.
Second, Mr. President.
Second by Councilman Lauterback. Any discussion or question on these minutes, please. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have an opportunity for a public hearing on the 2015 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President Council. Tonight's public hearing is the second of two required public hearings for the fiscal year 2015 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Allocation Program. This public hearing is an application-specific hearing. Based on information from the Development Services Agency, we anticipate a total of approximately $86,000 in CDBG funding for our program year, FY 2015. Staff has reviewed external applications and completed evaluation on internal project ideas. This evening, staff submits for a public evaluation and council consideration recommendations for two community applications for use of 2015 CDBG funding and one internal project recommendation. The first recommended application is a request by Community Action Partnership in the amount of $31,500 for repair replacement of the roof at the agency's 469 Dayton Avenue location. CAP recently purchased the vacant building and is rehabbing the structure for use and providing services to low-income elderly and handicapped persons within the city of Xenia and Green County. The project would be eligible under the national objective of the area-wide benefit or services to limited clientele. Our Internal Development Review Committee recommends this project for funding. The second recommended application is from the Carnegie Historic District, which is seeking $8,600 in funding that would cover a portion of the cost of conducting an historic preservation study and historic structure report and master plan for the Carnegie Library Building located at 194 East Church Street. Carnegie Library in Xenia is owned by Green County and under the purview of the County Commission. With no current reuse plans, the building is suffering under a state of disrepair and has a blinding influence on the surrounding neighborhood. The intended result of the studies is to facilitate rehab and reuse planning for the structure by providing baseline information on the facility condition, rehab needs, and feasible reuses. The Development Review Committee also recommends this project for funding. Finally, staff is recommending that the 20-- excuse me, recommends that $28,700 in 2015 CDBG funding be scheduled for continuing street improvement projects initiated this year along East Church Street Corridor. This funding would be used specifically for both curb repair installation of sidewalk replacements that meet ADA requirements. These projects complement broader neighborhood revitalization planning efforts currently underway by city staff and local clergy. The remaining $17,200 in available funding would be earmarked for general grant administration and fair housing activities. Staff requests council conduct a public hearing and further recommends adoption of a resolution as an emergency authorizing submittal of the overall application as presented prior to the June 26th deadline.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone who would like to speak for these submissions for CDBG to step to the podium, provide us your name and address, limit your comments to four to five minutes, please. Are you speaking for the CDBG grants?
Josephine Reno, P.O., Box 361, Xenia, Ohio. As researcher and preparer of the documentation to place the Xenia Carnegie Library on the National Register of Historic Places, I support the funding for this historic structures report, to be able to develop the Carnegie, and also for the communities surrounding it to bring it back to full economic status.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Would anyone else care to come forward?
I'm Barbara Bradfeut, and I'm founder and president of the Carnegie Historic District Incorporated, and I'm speaking in favor of this grant. I think we chose the name Carnegie because it is such a beautiful building, and many communities have several buildings, but Xenia, in Xenia, we just have the one, the Carnegie Library. And we were founded, our group was founded in the '90s, and we have been working for preservation ever since that time. And December the 7th, they voted unanimously for the National Registry of Historic Places. It was by the Board of the Ohio History Connection, and our mayor, Marcia, was in attendance, and that was December 7th, and then February 24th, the Department of the Interior verified the vote. So it was a very wonderful day for us, and the preservation architect did a walkthrough, and he said there's-- he's the one that did the downtown Xenia review, too. He said, "There's no reasoning in the world why this building couldn't be restored and be a wonderful asset to the city of Xenia." So we're rooting for the restoration. There are lots of wonderful things that can happen to this building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else care to come forward? Thank you.
I am John Grady. I live at 1080 Independence Drive here in Xenia, and I, too, am very supportive of this project, and in fact, I see a lot of vision and I have a lot of passion for this particular project, and I don't just represent myself. It's been interesting, over the last two or three years, the number of people who have come to me, not just from Xenia but other parts of Green County, and said, "John, the Carnegie needs to be restored. What an outstanding form of classical architecture." So I have probably three major reasons. I'll give those to you quickly. I could talk a lot, but I won't, and I know you have other business to conduct, but my biggest, probably my biggest reason for even being involved in this project and supporting is its overall importance in economic development for our community, and I think this is one more piece that will help towards stimulating economic development here in Xenia. But my three major reasons, and also I could tell you historically, having grown up in Columbus, Indiana, and watched how the whole downtown was revitalized, restoring old facilities, building new, and if I could just show you, Columbus, Indiana today is a booming city with strong economic development, growing in many different ways, but that's beside the point, but that also gives me a little background and a little lens, and I'm a person who is an optimist, so I see a lot of potential. So my three major reasons for doing this would be really the opportunity to restore a significant historical and architectural structure here in Xenia. I had a wonderful time going, visiting the Green Room, the Historical Society, and just learning about the people who have gone before us, who had a part in actually reading even the letter that went to Carnegie, and hearing what happened in terms of getting the first $20,000, and then actually going back and asking for $1,350 for furnishings. And so just looking at the history and realizing there's a lot of people who have gone before us. The second point would be an opportunity to continue to contribute to your overall plan to beautify the downtown area. So I really compliment you on what you've been doing and your vision for the downtown area. The third thing I would say is it's an opportunity to create a distinctive destination that will attract tourism. Of course, I'm all for economic development, and I see potential there to add to and attract tourism, and I won't get into uses for the facility, but I think the first major step, of course, is to thankfully get this approved so we can do a study on its use as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Would anyone else care to come forward and speak for the CDBG proposals, please? Seeing no more, would anyone care to come and speak against the CDBG proposals, please? And on the same general topic, if either someone would care to come and speak either for nor against the CDBG proposals, please step to the podium, please. Seeing no one else coming forward, I'll close the public hearing at this point and ask for a motion as an emergency, please, to authorize the city manager to submit the application.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Cow, second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mills. Any discussion or question on the motion before us, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have an opportunity for audience comments. If anyone would care to come and speak to the Xenia City Council, please step to the podium, provide us your name and address, and limit your comments four to five minutes, please.
My name is Andrew Breckenridge, and I live at 1766 Rockwell Drive, and about a month ago, I had came in here for a meeting with Mr. Mayorman to discuss some things I had written in a letter back in February about park updates and things of that nature. One of the things that I wanted to bring up is West Side Park. There's a skate park at the park, and I was thinking like there might need to be a sign that says, like, if you don't have a skateboard or a bike, then don't play on the equipment because there have been lots of injuries to people who do skate or other box on the equipment, and I was just wondering if that would be an issue to handle. And another thing is, a lot of the parks here in Xenia do need updating, because they've been around for about a few years now, and just kind of might need like a little touch-up or thing about that. And I do understand, I have a full understanding about the splash pad and the Frisbee Golf Course coming to Xenia, and I'm glad about that. That is something that Xenia has been needing for a while for the kids, because when I would go to the high school out here, a lot of kids who say a lot of crap about, like, Xenia don't have this, or Xenia don't have that, well, technically, why don't you just either write a letter or talk at one of the council meetings about that, which they never listen to me, which, nah, I don't have an issue with. So, yeah, that's basically all I got to say, so thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Mayorman, in regards to some of his comments, if you could get in touch with him, send him perhaps the link to our most recent review for updates planned for the park over the next several years would be probably of interest for you to see. Thank you very much. Would anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please?
I don't think it would be right if I didn't speak, because he's supposed to quench the spirit, you know, and so--
Before you get started, just per rules of council, name and address, and--
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Charlie Huff, 736--
We know who you are.
North Detroit Street.
Thank you.
And somebody told me the other day, said, "Don't you think you ought to get a little bit of handle on your emotions, man?" But this is me, and I want to thank all of you, and I haven't seen you for a while. Andy's mother is watching my mother, my wife, and she's there with her now, and she's flexible and gives me a chance to get out, and it's good, this is a good time tonight because I got a chance to give the prayer and see you guys and let you know that we're not together, but I'm always on your heart, I know, and you're on mine, and I like the way some of you think, you know, and John came over and he said, "He wants to look like me one of these days," you know? But anyhow, God bless you, and prayer is the key, and we need to tell one another, and I'm glad I've met him, and his mother is a wonderful lady, and that's what we have to do, is encourage one another, speak to one another, and I called Jim Percival, boy, he was tickled to death, you know, and I talked to him for a while. But anyhow, thank you, and thank you for the prayers, because we need prayer, and we never get rid of it, because I'm a soldier of the cross. Soldiers fight, and I'll fight for prayer. So good to see you guys and gals, and God bless you, and thank you so very much. So we're gonna go. Is Andy finished?
No.
Okay, so thank you, and you guys take it easy, and I promise I'll behave myself.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please? Seeing no more, we will turn to reports of committees. Councilwoman Mills, Board of Recreation Arts and Cultural Activities, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a very busy time for our BRACA board. We are constantly having all these great activities. There are flyers throughout different locations in town that has the whole summer activities, and all the summer activities on our flyers are completely free to the public, so we encourage people to come out. I would like to speak on a few that we just had. One was first Fridays in the months of June, July, and August, we follow up with a movie at the park, and we had a wonderful night with the movie. It was Big Hero Six. We had a great turnout, and we want to encourage people to come out and join us for this. It's a large, enormous outdoor screen. You just need to bring a chair or a blanket to sit down. Popcorn and drinks are provided free, so we would just love to invite you to come and join us. And that was on a Friday night. Saturday morning, there was over 130 children in attending for the fishing derby. There was all kinds of fish caught. Every child received a T-shirt and also some type of a prize, and they had a wonderful day. It was one of our best. Everyone had lunch provided for them, and again, that was all free to the community. And then we finished out last weekend with the Ohio Valley British Brass Band. It is a 40-piece ensemble band. It was phenomenal, great, great band that, you know, we encourage, they always start us out with our season, and I encourage people to come and view that. I also wanted to add that there are a few spaces left for the adopted spots, so if you enjoy planting some flowers in downtown Xenia and maintaining them, you have free range of what flowers you want to plant, and we appreciate people who adopted the spots so far. So almost every place that you see in downtown area, that has been bonded by a volunteer. I also would like to mention that coming up on Sunday, the 28th, the Green County Adult Band will be playing at Shawnee Park, so encourage you to come out and see some of your neighbors and fellow Green County residents and enjoy that night. Another exciting thing coming up for BRACA is being part of the July 3 activities. We are going to be showing the movie Lego at the July 3, and so if you're wondering how we can have fireworks and a movie at the same time, we've got it worked out. We're going to start the movie. We're going to have a brief intermission of wonderful fireworks, and I got to tell you, the movie location is the best location, I believe, to see the fireworks, so park your blanket, park your chairs, come and join us and watch the Lego movie after the fireworks, and everybody is leaving and all the hustle and bustle, stay with us and finish the movie. So I think we have a great plan. BRACA has worked so hard, and I, again, I just want to say thank you to the members. BRACA is a five-member board that hosts all of these activities, not only in the summer, but throughout the whole season, Easter, Christmas, all of those things that you see going on is all through volunteers. So if you would like to help us, we would love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Councilwoman Mills of BRACA, please? Seeing none, Councilman Smith, Traffic Commission, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Xenia City Traffic Commission met on Monday, June 1st. We had no visitors. That was our first meeting since March of this year. We had three members of the commission present. I do want to announce that it looks like we have a vacancy on the Traffic Commission, so if there's some interest out there, please contact Michelle Johnson, our city clerk. She'll be putting out information about that. Several things on the agenda that night. One was a request for a slowdown deaf child in the area. That sign was approved by commission unanimously. Discussion regarding traffic on West Third Street, request by a citizen, well, basically some request to just slow traffic down in that neighborhood due to some children playing in the area. City Engineers are looking into that. Looks like there might be a need for some signage or just more enforcement in that area, so that was recommended by staff. Also, discussion at the intersection of 42 and Leadbetter, again, that intersection where we used to have the no-man's-land there, citizens reporting that it just seems the traffic light timing is off. Lot of discussion of that. It does seem like when you're traveling through town and you're in a hurry, the lights just don't work in your favor, and I think it's just, it's a perception rather than a deficiency. So if there are any signage issues or traffic signal issues, please submit those to our city engineer, Chris Berger, and he will fully investigate that, and that's pretty much all we had that evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything for Councilman Smith and Traffic Commission, please? Seeing none, Mayor Bayless, Board of Zoning Appeals, please.
Thank you. Board of Zoning Appeals met on Tuesday, May 26th, due to the Memorial Day holiday. We had one item, a variance request to allow construction of a six-foot-tall wood privacy fence in a front yard at 1026 Bell Brook Avenue. It was approved with the condition that the length of the six-foot-tall section of the fence in the front yard, as it parallels Peace Pipe Trail, be limited to no more than 10 feet to accommodate an existing tree. That's it.
Thank you very much. Anything for the mayor and Board of Zoning Appeals, please? Seeing none, anything to bring to the good of the order and your items from city council and mayor, please?
I have one. Thank you, Mr. President. Was able to attend the business after-hours tonight at Xenia Station. I saw the mayor there, if the rest of you were there, and I missed you, I apologize. Did have someone ask me at that open house if there was a possibility of looking into feasibility of adding electricity to the caboose. It's just really hot in there, and they have to run an extension cord right now if they want to run a fan or a light in there, a light switch, and it does look kind of, because it just comes across the parking lot there. So I just thought I would bring that up tonight, didn't want to surprise you, just if we can look into that. I said I would mention that to the city manager tonight, so I wanted to do that before I forgot, so, and I'll talk about that real quick. That after-hours is pretty well attended. We really have a gem in our city, and it is Xenia Station. It's quite a walk to the top, and it is a wonderful view, and the friends at Xenia Station are doing a great job with that, and there was a lot of, a few, Bob Hackett was there and some other people. City Engineer was there, so it was just really well attended. I was glad to see that, and I think this was only my second time in the caboose, so it was fun. Saw the mayor there, and they had food. They had pork, barbecue pork, so I teased him if that was any of the leftover pigs that were running around through town that we're known for, but anyway, they said that it was not, so, but it was fun. Why not, man?
It was one of the 400 that got killed.
It'd be the baby back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Anything else from my colleagues, please? Seeing no more, reports of city offices, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. One scheduled item this evening and a couple of updates. The staff is recommending council authorize execution of a contract with public entities pooled pile for property and liability insurance coverage ranging from May 1, 2015 to May 1, 2016, the amount of $187,327. As discussed in the agenda report, we've been delayed in finalizing the new contract for this coverage year due to discrepancies observed. The staff completed a more thorough evaluation of our assets listed for coverage. We should note that there was continuation of coverage through that period, but it is necessary to officially adopt a new contract. With the assistance of PEP and Montgomery Insurance, we believe we've arrived at a comprehensive coverage plan that will more adequately protect the city's interests. As a result, and while coverage rates were guaranteed for three years with PEP under the original contract proposal, the total contract amount for the new year does reflect an increase due to the expanded coverage of the program. Authorization to execute this contract will maintain our current relationship with PEP and Montgomery Insurance for coverage year 2016, which is the last of the three-year rate-guaranteed period originally introduced.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to authorize city manager to execute the contract?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback, second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Upstayed.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mr. President, if it's council's pleasure, the finance district, I would also recommend council entertain a motion to authorize payment of that. We've not been invoiced yet, but seeing how the official contract year has started, we'd like to be able to expedite that payment, and if we waited, we'd have to ditch the next schedule of bills, so we would recommend a motion to authorize that payment.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to authorize payment?
So moved.
Moved by the vice president, second, please.
Second. Does it need to be an emergency?
Not in opposition.
No? Okay.
Second by Councilman Smith. Discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Couple of brief updates and announcements. Of course, we've had the Criterion Race here a couple of weeks ago, which was a fantastic success for the community. Very excited about that. Last week's First Fridays was a growth over the first one this year. So we're seeing some really exciting community events that I think are really providing some neat opportunities for families in the community. And Councilwoman Mills mentioned one of the significant events we have coming up. That week, that first week of July, we had some outstanding community opportunities for families, all free of charge. I had an opportunity to sit down and talk at length on some issues with folks from TCN Behavioral here in Xenia, provide a tremendous service in behavioral health community. They're celebrating a 25th anniversary on Wednesday, July 1st, from 12 to 4 p.m. at their location, 452 West Market Street. Free community event, games, prizes, Zombie Dogs, which is an award-winning food truck for hot dogs. I guess they're the national hot dog food truck champion, if there's such a thing. Craft space painting, Dunk Tank, Bouncy House, all free of charge to our citizens, again, on July 1st. Folks can come out and take part in that. The following night, Athletes in Action on their campuses, having a free community festival, free games, food, entertainment, all kinds of activities, movie, which is, I'm trying to remember now.
Despicable Me.
Me Too, I think. So again, tremendous venue out there, free of charge the very next night after TCN. Then on July 3rd, as Councilwoman Mills mentioned, we have our July 1 Fridays, starting at about 4 p.m. downtown here, 4:00, 5:00 p.m., with activities that will include all of the scheduled events as part of the Sunny Cab Memorial Fireworks Festival. And I provided some information for council tonight. Again, a range of activities from bouncy houses, face painting, outdoor laser tag, live entertainment, including puppet shows, music, the movie, as Councilwoman Mills talked about, teen triathlon. There'll be a children's bike race starting downtown here, or bike parade, I should say, that will go from downtown to the park with prizes awarded. Tremendous opportunity for local residents to come out and share in a spirit of independence. And we want to thank all the sponsors, not only TCN and AIA, but all the sponsors for the Memorial Fireworks Rotary's been instrumental in helping to plan this event. So again, we hear lots of folks saying there aren't a lot of things to do in our community, but here's a three-day period where we'll have tremendous activities. So just encourage the public to come out and support those events.
Thank you very much. Question, are we assisting in the advertising on our channel and via Facebook for the July 1st and 2nd activities?
Yes, we will have those out there. In fact, we will also have, we're going to try to saturate the community with information on the fireworks event as well. This is something that we have not done for a long time. We don't want anyone to be surprised at the fireworks or by the fireworks. So again, we'll be putting the information out there, direct mailing to a lot of the residents of the area. We'll be doing hyperreached calls on that Thursday, as well as calls on that Friday of the event. We'll also have information out on Facebook, on the city's website, Twitter, so we'll try to saturate, get as much information out there. Parking will be of significant concern. We do have identified locations around the downtown area. Those maps and information on parking availability will be made available as soon as we can get those materials finalized, and we're working on those right now, so.
Thank you very much.
And if you see any flyers that look like this, pick it up. It has all the information on it and they are located throughout the community.
Very good. Anything else for our city managers this evening, please? Seeing none, Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item this evening, the scheduled bills in the amount of $483,851.35.
May I have a motion, please, to pay our bills this evening, please?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please.
Second.
Second by the Vice President. Any discussion or question on the bills, please? Councilman Cow.
Thank you very much. I noticed the May Teladoc bill on there. Have we received any kind of report back from our broker on registration of the cards and stuff from employees and?
Believe we do have information on registration and some degree of utilization. We can sort of provide it.
Thank you.
Anything else, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
That's all I had this evening, Mr. President.
Anything for our Finance Director this evening, please? Seeing none, Mr. Law Director.
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything for the Law Director this evening? Seeing none, any updates to our summary of action items, Mr. City Manager?
Just one brief update. We are recommending, after some additional research and review, that we'll have some reporting information back on the concept of a streetlight assessment. We're recommending that go back to the Budget Committee for review with the Budget Committee. And don't, do we have a, I don't know if we have a date of schedule?
I don't know that we have one yet.
So we'll get that next Budget Committee review, Budget and Finance Committee meeting for review of that schedule here right away.
Thank you very much. Any comments for my colleagues on anything under summary of action items or any additions or deletions? Seeing none, reading of communications and discussion, Councilman Cow.
Thank you very much. Just one thing, Mr. Huff, Charlie Huff comes here and he gives our prayers from time to time. I don't think, Charlie does a lot of good things in the community and probably doesn't take credit for a lot of the things he does, so I'd just like to thank him for what he does in the community and for everything he's done, his wife's little, and wish her some prayers. Just thank him for being an active participant in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mills.
Thank you. I can only continue to say that Xenia is what we make it. So it is up to us as the citizens, it's up to us as the people who live on the outside of Xenia, all those who are in the Xenia Community School District, it is up to us to make Xenia the best she can be. So we encourage you to shop at home, stay at home for this 4th of July period. There are so many great things and I just encourage you to become a part of it because the more you give and become a part of it, the more you receive back and you really do have your eyes open. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Cow, or Councilman Lauterback, please.
Thank you. Just one item. I just want to remind the citizens, there's four seats open this year. December 31st is the last term of four of us, myself, Councilman Cow, President Engel, Vice President Long. You can get petitions now. The deadline is August the 5th. You need 75 signatures from registered voters. I would strongly encourage citizens to get involved in your community. You know, we don't live in a perfect city, but it takes a lot more guts to run for an office than to sit back on Facebook and downplay members of council. So for those naysayers, I would encourage you and every other citizen in Xenia, please get a petition and run for office. So that's the American way, that's the democratic way, and that's the way for people to get involved that have a little bit of guts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to say thank you to the First Fridays Committee for an excellent First Fridays last week here downtown Xenia. It's just really crowded. Just great to see a lot of people there and there's a lot of activities to do. So again, that was well-attended and appreciate the work of the volunteers that helped put that together. It's really dry. It's been dry. I was talking to someone that mows and he said that he doesn't remember it being this dry this early in the summer. So a lot of yards are getting kind of yellow and stuff. So I know we've never had water consumption shortage or anything like that. I guess we're looking okay. Yeah, I mean, Xenia's really blessed. We've got a great resource there. But yeah, just remember, it's hot. Water, your pets, if they're outside, take them in if it's really hot. So keep that in mind. And also wanted...
I'm gonna jump in. Tell them to check their neighbors, too.
Oh, check on your neighbors?
Yeah.
Yeah, don't want any surprises. If you haven't seen your neighbors in a while, knock on their door, make sure they're okay. Did want to say that we are in a democratic country, America, and what better way to celebrate 4th of July is to attend the program, America. It's gonna be 7 o'clock, July 1st, 2nd, and 3rd at First Church of Christ on Leadbetter Road. They have done phenomenal patriotic programs in the past. They took several years off, came back last year. That is directed by Billy Ritchie, the chemistry teacher here in Xenia. And again, that's July 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. There's a pre-concert at 6:30 each night and then they'll be in that program, some really old-time patriotic songs like "Over There" and "Yankee Doodle." So if you can attend that, and it is free, so if you can attend that, I would encourage citizens to do that. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mayor.
Thank you. I was asked to be a starter for the bicycle race, the Tour de Xenia, and it was sponsored, I guess, by Green Memorial Hospital. They presented that race. Ohio State Junior and Master Criterion Championships. Over $5,000 in prize money, prizes and merchandise. And it was really great for Xenia. It was wonderful to see all the people to come out. And I have a special shout-out to Ian, and I don't know his last name. I know it starts with an S and it's a long name, but he's a Xenia High School student. He entered the race and he came by himself. He said he didn't have the right kind of bike. He was kind of embarrassed over his bike. But in talking with this young man, it was just great to see that nothing stopped him. It didn't matter what kind of bike he had, he was going to enter the race and he did. He didn't win, but he was there, so I really praised him for that and glad I was able just to talk to him. He was really encouraging. I did attend an update on the Wright-Passon Air Force Base Partnership and we'll hear more information about that at a later time. And then on the 4th, and that was on the 4th, and then on Monday, I did attend the Change of Command Ceremony. It was the first of its kind where a four-star general retired and a four-star general took her place, so that set history. And so that was a great occasion. Saturday will be a garage sale and that's sponsored by Xenia School Foundation Board. It will be held at Shawnee School from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 o'clock. And of course, the Xenia Foundation Board, which I'm a member of as well, does a lot of good things. They give scholarships to graduating high school seniors. They pay to have, to buy materials for schools. When they submit their grants, they submit them to the foundation and they're approved. And so a lot of supplementary material has been given to the Xenia Schools through the foundation. So, and then finally, the Bridges of Hope will have their open house this Sunday from 3:00 to 6:00 at the former Simon Kenton School. So anyone who's able to go out and support that wonderful cause, 3:00 to 6:00 on Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Only item I had you just mentioned. I will encourage anyone who would like to learn more about what the Bridges of Hope project is to attend that community festival. They will have members of each group who hopes to provide services there to the homeless, the impoverished, and the substance abuse program. So especially if you live in the neighborhood and you're wondering what might be coming into your neighborhood or your plane, take some time, 3:00 to 6:00 on Sunday. Go out and take a tour, meet those groups and find out what great plans they have for the community.
Thank you very much. As for myself, I attended a number of events as well this past couple of weeks. The Tour de Xenia was outstanding. The food trucks there in particular, One Bistro, were equally outstanding. I was truly impressed by the quality of racing that I saw and it was very, almost unsettling being right along the start-finish line as the entire continuum of them, probably 15, 20 racers would come by. It literally felt like a truck was flying by you about 6 to 12 inches away from you. Believe the main event for the men was actually won by a 16-year-old who is being courted by someone of Tour de France quality. So we truly had some exceptional racers here in Xenia that day and certainly hope that that event would continue on into the future. I also was at the fishing derby and would like to specifically thank all the volunteers that came out for that. That was an exceptional event. I believe everyone that was there had a great time. Everyone seemed to be really enjoying themselves. I was shown, I didn't see it, but I was shown a photo of what I think was the largest fish caught, a 24-inch catfish. It was absolutely scary-looking and humongous, being held by this young person. In addition to that, music in the park, I had the pleasure of opening that for Councilwoman Mills and welcoming the Ohio Valley British Brass Band. That was an exceptional event. I think there were probably 80 to 85 citizens in attendance there and again, everyone seemed to enjoy themselves and the band indicated their continuing desire to come and be a part of Xenia's music festival as they love the venue and they love the crowds that come. So I certainly shared with them, please contact Councilwoman Mills and we would be happy to get you on the schedule for the next year. Past that, obviously, the First Fridays was outstanding, continues to be, and would echo all the comments of my colleagues to come out on July 3rd and all the other events that you've heard described for our early July, as it will be a great event here locally for us and as all have remarked, plenty to do in Xenia and the vast, vast majority of it all free. So please come out and enjoy yourselves, but please be safe at the same time as there will be many, many people out. Unless anyone has anything else to add, I would ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills. Second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor. Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.[1788.54]